Okay.
Morning, everyone.
Well, good morning. Beautiful morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judy. Ronomo, Patrice.
Morning, everybody.
Lena is going to join us by phone. Her event where she needs to be at will be at 10:00. So she'll try and stay on until then and then come back. Oh, oh, my gosh, there she is. Oh, you, you told me otherwise. Or did I have it correct? You're on mute. Still on mute. No, you're still. Should I tell her she's on mute?
I think you've told her. She sounds better being unmuted.
Now you're on. Go ahead, Lena.
I wanted to make sure I keep an eye on all of you, so I worked that out.
All right. Good job. Somebody has to keep an eye on us. All right. Actually, everybody's doing a wonderful job. And look, we're almost past the hump of, you know, really intense beginning of the year and every. So we're almost, you know, the, we knew the budget would be time certain. So we're really hitting a good point right now of, you know, we go through the wrap up, see what we need to do in a wise way and retreat next week, a little bit more meetings, but I think we're, we're going to hit a good pace here pretty soon. Okay. Good morning, Steve.
How's everyone doing today?
Doing well.
Nice shirt, Steve.
Orange shirt Friday.
Very nice.
I put my fishing shirt on. I thought it was Saturday.
Gone fishing. Gone fishing.
That's right.
The days are running together, aren't they?
It's been, it's been a sprint.
Yeah, sure.
It's been a sprint. I had coffee with Mike Townsend this morning. He says hi to everybody.
All right.
Nice.
Yeah, I told Mike where your ears burning. That's good. He sends the best.
He's still talking to us. Wonderful.
Of course.
You tell him it's budget time, so he'll come back.
Well, actually, I invited him over if he wanted to just participate in the budget. He said, ah, that's okay.
I love it. Well.
Coronimo, your daughter is playing in the track and field state championship. That is really exciting.
What's she, what's her event?
Actually, Siri's daughter is doing that, too.
Oh, that is really neat. That'll be really fun. So I think Coronimo has been frozen in time.
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
Thank you. He's thinking about the response.
How about your daughter, Lindsay? What event?
Siri.
Siri. Oh, my gosh.
My daughter's doing the 32, the 16, and the 800.
Wow. Oh, my gosh.
But I think she got my cold, so I'm a little worried about her.
Oh, no. Coronimo, you are just slow and steady, but we can't.
We need the gong hook to pull Coronimo off. Well, that's pretty grueling.
It sounds like listening to a train from afar.
This, this road trip, this family road trip is gone way too long. Got to get to Disneyland.
Are we there yet? All right, let me grab control here.
We've got to this, this cross-country family trip to Disneyland or Wally World has got to end very soon.
It's been fun. Okay. Well, we are of time, so why don't, why don't we go ahead and call the meeting to order? And hop right back into budget. Our, hey, we hope, although not the final time dealing with budget. So.
You know, I, I may have done something bad here. I may have to go out and come back in. So let me see if I can get myself back.
Okay.
So I just.
Everything here on this side works well, Patrice.
You're looking, yeah.
Ah, there we go. I got it. I just turned up the volume, so I can hear everybody now.
So Mr. Chair, members of the board, if I may, before we begin to show the information, I want to start off with a bit of an introduction and a recommendation on our budget process at this point in time. If I may, sir.
Please, Steve. I think we're of a similar mind, probably. Go ahead.
So Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the last, since I arrived on April 5th, we've been talking budget. We spent the first two weeks of my arrival meeting with departments. And you'll recall that when I arrived here at that point in time, the revenue picture was very iffy. And consequently, and I think very responsibly, the organization position on service improvement requests were, you know, hold off on those. Because again, the revenue picture was, was pretty dire at that point in time. Just a couple of days after I arrived, the revenue picture, just again, more forecasting from the budget team indicated that the revenue picture was, was improving. And at that, at that point in time, you know, in my role, I did modify with, you know, with advisement or FYI from the board, that let's, let's, let's invite service improvement requests. We have to know what our need is. And well, you know, one camp may say, well, why would we be in with all due respect, two, two decisions that were made, but you know, one, one, one position or one perspective might be why would we be asking for information on needs if we're not able to grant those needs through the budget process? And that's a very, that's a very clear position. At the same time, by doing that, we don't know what the needs are. And I think that regardless of a budget position, we always want to know, you in your governance role want to know what the needs of the organization are. And with that, we did invite departments to submit service improvement requests, which when we received, you know, several, all very good, all showing that the need is there for various, you know, capacity issues now as well as resources for the future. So from there, we had, at the manager level, had good discussions with the departments and the, and the elected officials on their budgets. And we formulated a recommendation that, that I presented to you a couple of weeks ago. Wow, two weeks ago. From there, again, more input from the departments and the elected officials. Great presentations, great conversations leading up to yesterday. And so when we look at the process and identifying the needs, I think that the, the, the organization, the department heads, the elected officials, the board members, the budget team, I think have done a magnificent job of quantifying need. And that, that is so important. And I think that the other thing that I did, and it was a bit of a Pandora's box, but it needed to be opened, was our FTE picture. That was, that is a, that is a box that, that for various reasons, we, we've, we've tended not to open fully. That for various reasons, we, we've, we've tended not to open fully and it's not a fault of any, I was part of that. History. I was part of that, you know, 10 years ago, seven years in front of that. I was part of that history. That, that tended to, to not look at our FTEs, not that I, not that. Not that me or the board at that time. Didn't want to, but again, it was all based on resource constraints. Budget constraints. So, so on the need side, we also opened up the discussion, a very important discussion on FTEs. And as a result of that, we did receive this through this budget process. Several requests related to FT needs. And this is again valuable information. We heard loud and clear. That compensation is a very needed important component of retention. But also expanding the team so that we're not. Relying on, 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 on a few people to do all the work of many. Is part of that as well. So looking at compensation, but also looking at possibly when we can and where we can. Expand the team. To, to, to ease the burden. We also look at techni- technology. And we talked about COVID and all the things that. We've, it's kicked us probably 10 years ahead of where we were probably going to be. When we think about technology, it's happening now. It happened. A year ago. It's going to happen in the future. So the role of technology in how we factor in our FTE needs is part of that as well. We're also looking at, at again, the, the, the impacts of COVID. Worth rethinking our space needs. You know, by, by design, we, we will have positions in the future. That are going to be more productive in a remote environment. Then in a, in a, in a, in a setting here at the county. So again, I'm talking all about the needs. All the different ways that we're looking at needs. We've done a great job in doing that. So let's switch over to the resource side, the, the revenue side. The only thing that's changed in our revenue. Is. ARP funding. That's going to be coming down the pipe. It's a great, I mean, again, I think had we not had ARP funding as something to look, to look towards. I think the tone of our discussions with the budget would have been different. I think it would have been very frustrating. And I think we look to ARP as. Here's a great opportunity. But in looking at ARP. There are certain areas that we need to have ARP to apply to that currently it does not. And, and there is an opportunity, and I've said this several times yesterday. To provide some. Input. Through to treasury to expand ARP. To include. For us, a large segment of our service to the public is our justice system. And the fact that it has been impacted. Along with every other local government as a result of COVID. We're not the only ones in this situation. And so. Through our lobbying efforts, our advocacy efforts. To, to, to get word to treasury that this is a dire need across the country. And to, and to receive the guidance and to receive, we hope, and I think we're, I think we have. I think we have allies in the administration that would agree. And in Congress and that would agree that this is an important part of, of, of our rescue. The American rescue should include our justice system to our communities. And so, so this is an important message that we want to mobilize. Our board to help get that word out, to get some results. But again, until that happens. We're looking at ARP as a revenue for possible application to justice and other components. That may not just not, may not be as, as spelled out, as, as spelled out as it needs to be for our comfort. You know, we're not going to. We're not going to invest our funds in, in, in an area. Where we don't have pretty clear guidance from treasury or very explicit. Guidance in what we have in front of us now that says, yes, this is an allowable use of ARP. We're not there yet. At the same time, going back on the needs piece, we're looking to ARP to fill a pretty large. Space that we occupy. And so as a result of some pretty big unknowns. My recommendation for the budget, and again. I don't want to take away from the needs that we have, that have been articulated to us. All the work that we've done to date has been needed. We have, we, we, we know. At least at this point in time, what the needs of the organization are to serve the public. To, to, for the constitutional officers to serve their constituents, our citizens. We know that. At the same time, we don't have as much of a revenue certainty. That I'm comfortable in recommending to you. At this point in time, as a result, my recommendation is going to be. That for purposes of this budget. That. We adopt the budget. At the department level, based on the 21 budgets. Let me, let me finish through. At the same time, so we're basically saying to all of our departments. Your 21 budget is now your 22 budgets with a couple of exceptions. All positions that were frozen are unfrozen. And number two. That our compensation for our employees at 3% be enacted as of July 1st. That takes care of certainty. It takes care of our employees, our team, our family. It also provides us, I think, a responsible opportunity. To see what guidance we're going to be receiving from treasury regarding ARP funding and applying it to criminal justice and other areas. We were looking at not only criminal justice, we're looking at IT infrastructure. We're looking at facility infrastructure. So, so there, there are several stimulus packages that we have put together. That are predicated not only on ARP, but other buckets of federal funding. And, and again, those are opportunities, but we just don't have the certainty of those opportunities today. Nor we will, nor will we probably have those certainties when we adopt the final, the tentative budget on June 8th, or the final budget on June 26th. Having said that. We do know what we're going to be receiving from treasury, from ARP. So we will be recommending adopting the budget. That includes that budget capacity. So we will be adopting the budget that includes what we know we're going to be getting. And so when we do adopt the budget, we know that we can make adjustments once we have more information about. The certainty of those funds, which means that when back to those service improvement requests. We may be, we hope, we hope to be releasing some of those SIR sooner than later. But again, those will be held basically in pause. Until we have additional direction from treasury that yes, you can. If we're not able to. It does not mean that we. Cannot. It does not mean that we can avoid. The inevitability of our investments in our justice system. We know there are, there's a need there. We know there is a bubble. And at that point in time, if we do not receive. Favorable guidance from treasury that we can use ARP funds to fill that space. We will in fact then be relying on our general fund capacity. To address those needs. And that general fund capacity may come from our, from our fund balance. Again, which has been, we're, 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 we're better positioned today than we were a year ago in that regard. So we do have. Capacity to support that. But again, that is. Fund balance are, are, are not recurring dollars. You know, fund balance is your savings account. You keep making withdrawals from your savings account over time without money coming in. You're going to dry that and you're going to deplete that. And so kind of simplify it in terms of my, my household budget. Is I've got a savings account. And, and at the same time, well, we want to make sure that our, that all of our functions are sustainable from your, from the standpoint of recurring funds. In this particular case, we don't have all that certainty. So kind of reiterating. My recommendation and, and we're going to be providing to you in the next hour, all the information that you requested. It's going to be the tenure plan. Based on the manager's recommendation. It's going to be the tenure plan based on our conversation yesterday. It's going to be the classification, the sorting that supervisor Bostis asked for. And so, so there's information that we're providing to you today because of course it fills more of that, it creates that context. By which you and your governance role can act on. But again, going back to my recommendation. Is to, when we look at that. My recommendation will be to adopt the budget as, as I said before. At the upper's budget ceiling. Provides us the capacity to spend against that ceiling. But for purposes of here and now, we're adopting the 21 budget. To, to mirror the 22 budget at the department level with the exception of unfreezing positions and providing compensation to our, to our employees. It's not to say that all the work that's been done today is for naught. It's not to say that at the department level that, well, what the heck? Or in some instances, what the hell? It's not to say that at all. It's to say that. There's a strong possibility, probability that we will in fact be able to. Proceed with investments in the organization, organization wide. But until we have these major pieces. That are defined and better known. We're going to, we're going to go through this path. I think we'll end up, I, I, I think. I'm optimistic that we're going to end up. Where we want to be, but it's going to take. 10 steps instead of three. I'm going to pause because I feel like I've been lecturing and I apologize for that.
Okay, and I'm going, I'll go through each of the board members in terms of response. But I'll, I'll, I'll start out. On it. It's, you know, I, I, I love what Steve's bringing. It's been in the back of my mind and I'm sure your minds, but. Push comes to shove, this is where. Our responsibility is, is looking at the budget. How can we help people do what they need to do? But, and, and do it for the sake of our communities, do it well. But by the same token. While we're doing it. We need to be fiscally responsible. We need to be prudent. There are a lot of unknowns that have been created. And so the real trick that we've all been wrestling through is how do we manage through those unknowns? While we have all these. Requests that are coming in, true needs, that, you know, absolutely. Capacity issues, compression issues. You know, just livability in the communities, the whole compensation component that we have out there. And, and doing their jobs better, you know, absolutely, as well as we have certain crisis components. Really great start to what we've been doing, looking at social indicators. Also while we're hearing everything that. The needs and the challenges that people are working through. But it's, it's a point that we needed to come back to. As we come to the end of the budget sessions. Is with these unknowns, how can we get it back to our level of responsibility of. Managed, management for the sake of the budget itself. You're hearing Steve, we are trying, we will put the, the. Capacity component into the tentative budget to take a look at ARP. But. But until we know those unknowns and how they, they go out. We need to be responsible. For the sake of the organization, the recommendation of removing the. Vacancies fit well within the recommended budget, which is a true need and, and that's, that's great that. That we, we can work on that rapidly. Because we understand the pressure that everybody's on. My analogy, as I, I was thinking through this, I was touch bases with Steve earlier today and I. My analogy was we're, we're on a family trip to the fair and we got to the fair. And we got through the gates, you know, with mom and dad. And we all went around and we saw all the rides we wanted. We saw all the, the food we wanted. And, and then we came back. To check in with, with our parents and, and they just paid $30 to get through the gate with their $50 that they brought so we could see the fair. And, and so then it came to the food and, and the. Wonderful food, but the fare prices and well, we each get a water ice. And, and by the way, we're going to split the chicken. We're not all going to get our own meals on what we're going to have. So it's, it's just coming back to. Steve's using the analogy of our personal bank account, same thing. We all, we know what we have. We need to be responsible for what we have and we can only do what we can with what we have. So how can we do it well? So I'm, 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 I'm really pleased with, okay, now we're bringing it back to that. So what I'm going to do, I'll, I'll go to vice chair first because she's, she, she might have to dash off. But otherwise I'll run through us numerically, give each board member a chance to. You know, respond to your initial comments here, Steve. And I know we have more that we'll look at closer. Go ahead Lena.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. And so good to be ending towards, towards the end of our. Budget session and a lot, a lot of really good discussion, a lot of ideas. And our staff and every department has really. Come through with a thoughtful presentation and really educating us on the, the daily. Activities and how they deliver services to our constituents. And just the quality of work that is done out there and with. Just the commitment and just the dedication that is. Delivered by the county. It's just absolutely amazing and. Listening to the presentations, you just want to empty your. Bank account and give it to them every single department. And yet we just don't have those dollars. And how do we, how do we meet the needs? And that's where, you know, even though I'm freezing, it sounds like it's not much, you know, I'm freezing the. The frozen positions that have been there, but that's going to really help. We've, we've really. The board has been wanting to do that for a while, but just was just absolutely. We've been challenged with, with our, our revenue. And so this year we're able to do that. And that's going to really help the departments. I'm really happy that we're able to. To do the 3%. We haven't been able to do that. This is the first year that we've been able to do that. And I'm really happy about that. And we're not piecemeal in it either, you know. I think the last time we did this, we were saying the upper, upper. If you make higher than this amount, you don't get it. Only these people. So, but this one's going to be across the board. And that's going to be very helpful for them. I really have to say that we. Yes. ARP funding, we've got to get out there and, and, and really lobby for that. We have our, our role caucus that is coming up, our meeting. I'm going to make sure that it is on the agenda. Steve and I have already talked about it so that we can. Add it to the agenda and we'll be able to have a conversation. And with all the counties. That, that's in the. That are members of the role caucus. And we just need to really be careful on how we administer the, the finances. We get, we can get very emotional about or, or else just. Very. Set and saying, I want to. Give more to this department and that. But it, and how do you offset that though? Every department needs so much more. And how do we do that? And that's, that's where we have to rely on our staff. I have to say them. I agree with the. With Steve, your recommendation. I, we have to be careful. There's so much that is still unknown out there. And I'm happy that we are. That we have agreed to increase the flood district. I know that Lucetta and the staff there. You know, they want to do so much more and yet. There's, we just don't have those dollars. And how do we, there's so much expectation from our communities. And they look to our, our county for these services. And how do we do that? You know, now. The governor has just ended the federal. Unemployment to the, to the residents, citizens of Arizona. And now, you know, that's going to impact the counties. And how do we, how do we provide that service? Seems like sometimes we, you make a decision, but what's the impact? You know, what's the ripple effect? And that's what we're. And that's what we're, we're the ones that end up having to be the safety net. We're always the safety net and how do we do that? And each one of our departments are very important. Each, each one of those departments, they deliver multiple, multiple, services that are, that are so needed by our, our citizens. And so we, and looking at our dollars, how do we, how do we, um, distribute the dollars where it, it meets some of their needs to be able to, um, deliver those services? Um, and yes, our employees through this pandemic, um, I see them as these horses dragging a wagon through the sand dune. And we're at the point where, you know, they need to breathe, be brushed down. They need to be fed, get water to them and make sure that they're, they have that rest. And part of our budget is, we're hoping that, you know, with the few increase and releasing the, um, the frozen positions that they'd be able to, um, be able to get some more help. I think that, uh, and those seem like they're small, but, uh, you know, that's what we can afford right now. And hopefully we'll be able to do more with these more, the fundings that were, the federal fundings that may be coming through. And that we have to be careful in making sure that we're able to, um, the same thing to set the right, the right budget and we have to really work with our departments, with our, um, the other electeds. Got to thank them for everything they do and they're just, um, you know, fulfilling their constitutional duties. Uh, they do such a great job and we all have to work together and we have to, um, look at the Steve who is the spoke of the wheel. And we're going to have to really coordinate and make sure that we're all on the same page. So that would be my comment on this, on, um, there's, and, and there's more presentation that's going to be coming through. Um, so that's where I'm at right now, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Steve. And I see you, Lucinda. Thank you.
Uh, okay, thank you, Matt, Vice Chair, Supervisor Horseman, Patrice.
Yes, and good morning, everybody. Good Friday morning. So, uh, I am, uh, like many of you, looking forward to the weekend and, and for those whose children are going to be competing down in Phoenix in the state tournament. I want to wish them well. That's very exciting and Huronimo, we want to have an update from you when we meet again. So, um, anyway, wish them all well. Um, wow, what a process this has been, what a learning experience this has been and I, um, got to thank, of course, our, our wonderful team there at the county. Um, they have just been amazing. Um, you know, we have, and I know, we all know this, um, but it's always, uh, was reminded by our county attorney about the fact that us electeds in fact have a statutory mandatory duty. And our statutory mandatory duty is set forth and in law, which clay, has sixty-six mandatory duties, and then there are many subparts to those duties. But our number one duty is to oversee the budget of this county. To oversee the budget of each of the departments. And it's our ultimate responsibility as, um, difficult as it is to weigh and balance the needs of our community, our whole community, our rural community, as well as our municipalities, as well as like staff, Paige, Williams. Um, we need to make sure that we are taking care of all the members of our community. And, and I take that responsibility as I know every member, member of the county does with great seriousness. You know, the budgets we receive from the departments, I didn't see fluff in those. You know, I, I, you know, occasionally you get some of the, the, the Twitter comments and about vanity projects. I didn't see vanity projects. What I saw were true needs of our community. Our departments that they have been able to serve and do the work that they've done, and I have to tell you, it was eye opening. I wasn't aware of all that they have been able to accomplish, especially during COVID. Especially during the time where so many of, of their positions had been frozen, had been held back. And I sat in and listened to the budget discussions back there for the development of the twenty twenty-one budget and boy was it bleak. And I, I compliment the board at that time for taking a very conservative approach for creating those frozen positions. Uh, and then I have to compliment our departments for what they were able to do and how they served our community during COVID and during the most horrible times, um, challenging times for our community. So the good news is that we have some revenue. It was a little bit above what was feared. And I really appreciate the county manager's, um, recommendation that we provide these hardworking, um, as, uh, uh, community service folks. Um, uh, they're raised. I think they're entitled to that three percent raise. Um, and when you take a look at some of the cost for the needed benefits, great benefit package that the county has. We want to make sure that what they actually take home can pay for those benefits, but also put some money in their pocket. So I think that three percent is recommended by the county manager is good. I know he's also put some money in for compression. Um, I'm not sure exactly how he's going to do that, but I say go to it, Steve. Oh, we do need to address that. So I appreciate that. Um, and I think it's also as, uh, is important for us to unfreeze the positions. And I think we're in a position now because it wasn't quite as bleak as we were so, uh, concerned it might be last year. Um, I think it's important to do that to help our very overtaxed departments. Um, and, and this year it'd be pretty hard too, and it is very hard. ARP, however, has given us, um, an, an opportunity, but we can't overstate that opportunity. As much, and I'm going to use Matt Ryan's, um, metaphors, as much as I'd love it to be the e-ticket for us to get everything we wanted and to give everything to all of our departments, um, that would be foolish. Uh, and, and I think that we need to weigh and balance what we've got and the opportunity we have with the needs, but be cognizant and cautious. Because number one, as the county manager keeps telling us, we aren't sure ultimately what we can or cannot use them for. And although I am hopeful that in terms of justice, uh, and, and in providing, uh, um, justice services for our community, that ARP will be able to be used for that. But we do have to be cautious and I hear the county manager when he tells us that. Um, and then we need to be cautious if we're going to use this ARP money to fund FTEs because they're going to be gone in three years. ARP's not going to go on forever. And, uh, hopefully, hopefully it'll be there for three years. One never knows with what goes on sometimes in the federal government. So I think we have to be cautious as we move forward and yet take that as the once in a lifetime opportunity that it is. And to use that once in a, a lifetime opportunity to meet the needs not only of our community now, but our community down the road and, and IT, I think is perfect area. There's some capital projects, et cetera, that are just a perfect area for taking care of the bubble, hopefully within the justice department is a perfect area. So, um, you know, I, I am excited about, uh, this whole process has been very informative, interesting. Um, I am looking forward to working with the rest of the board and with our management team. But I have to say, I, at this point, and I'm looking to hear more, um, but as, as much as it hurts me to do so, um, I think that the county's, uh, manager's budget, and I took a look at the information sent by Siri this morning and included our, um, FTEs that we all would like, uh, more for the county sheriffs, more for IT. And I take a look at the long-term effects. It might look great short-term, in fact, it looks great short-term. But when you take a look at it long-term, it could put us in a difficult position. And I hear the word of caution as much as I don't like it. Um, I hear that word of caution and, um, and we may have a greater opportunity next year as we, as things shake down, as we get ourselves back to normal, as we have a clearer picture of what the revenue is going to produce, uh, what revenue we produce here in Coquigny County. So, um, I look forward for today, um, my inclination at this point, um, is to, um, take a conservative approach, uh, and have that chicken dinner, uh, shared amongst us all instead of, uh, having individual, um, um, lunches. So, uh, with that, uh, I, I, I'm looking forward to going forward and, and seeing if there's anything else. Otherwise, I hear the words of caution and I think the county manager has presented a very doable and quite frankly, um, something that meets the needs of our community. So thanks. But I want another Ferris wheel ride. I'd rather have two bowl steaks.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. We, we have, we'll, we'll come back next year and we'll take a look at that, okay? So next up we have, uh, Supervisor Vasquez, Huronima. Nope, your voice, nope, you're muted though. There we go.
Sorry, and I thought it was internet problems this time. Okay, so, uh, good morning, staff. I'd just like to say thank you for all your hard work and taking us through all the different departments. Uh, it's a lot. Uh, it's definitely been a high learning curve, uh, understanding all the needs and, and of the, of the county. Uh, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it and we'll try to do our best to accommodate it as much as we can within the realm of caution as was mentioned before. Um, we're still not quite out of the hole that COVID put us in and so I think it would be a little premature to, to jump and, and try to get everything that we want in this round. I, I like the idea of getting as much as we can right now within the cautionary, uh, bubble that we're looking at or, or within, within the range that's recommended. And then also looking at what kind of all other, um, possibilities are moving forward with other funding, uh, possibly with next year. But I, I, again, I, I feel like we're, we're in a good place. We have more revenue than we were expecting at this time. But that could, we're still not out of the woods yet. And so I would want, I wouldn't want to jump too, too fast, too soon. But I do understand and recognize the, the fiscal needs of our departments. Uh, our staff needs the, the extra FTEs and needs the compensation. And so I definitely want to see how we can accommodate that and, and make it win-win for everybody. Uh, we might not be able to compensate as high as we'd like or provide as many FTEs as we'd like, but we'd like to try to get as much as we can out there to the staff to help support, um, our staff providing these needed services to the county. Um, so I'm, and, and looking forward to seeing the final tweaks on it to see where we can, we can go and, and finalize this process. I'm glad we're almost done. It's been quite a bear. Um, but, uh, it's been a good process. Uh, I feel like my brain is mush after day, you know? Um, but I, I, I'm sure the, the staff feel that same way too, preparing for this and, and, you know, giving us their presentations. And so again, I just really appreciate, uh, your leadership, Steve, and, and, and your leadership team. Uh, all the department heads and all the work they've done and, and all the staff that supported them to, to get us to this point where we could have these, these hard candid conversations about, about what are our priorities in, in the county and, and, uh, you know, we still have some hard decisions to make. We're not going to be able to please everybody, unfortunately. Um, we're trying to do the best we can and, and, and take a, an even, uh, even approach so that we, we have equity across departments as much as possible. Um, and just please bear with us. We're trying to do the best we can, just like you are and, and hopefully together we'll come out with something that, that'll lead into twenty twenty-two in a good way, but also set us up for the future because like was mentioned before, we don't want to overreach right now and then be in a hole later. It's better to be cautious now and step by step. In mentally increased what we want, so that way we can continue the upward trend rather than getting caught in a situation where we have to go backwards. So, um, again, I go back to the, the, the saying, uh, you got to move slow to move fast. Um, we, a whole, uh, I feel like we're close out of the hole, but we're not quite there yet. And so, you know, I, I too just, uh, recommend caution and and ask for your understanding as we try to, uh, we try to accommodate as much as we can for the different departments and services, uh, the best we can under the circumstances. So, uh, again, thank you and good job.
Right. Thank you Supervisor Vasquez. Supervisor Bagay, Judy.
Wow. Um, I just want to thank the departments, you know, for coming forth and giving us a true picture of what their, our overall needs are. And certainly we're, we won't be able to address everything that has been requested uh, due to the funding, um, resources that we have and then also the unforeseen funds that may be coming about. But I certainly would like to make sure that, you know, we, um, we consider that and, um, I guess we're open to making adjustments later on if anything comes down that we feel that, that that, that we can do more for, a little bit more for the departments. Um, but anyway, um, a lot of, um, comments that were made by the, the supervisors, I totally agree with every single one of them. And I think, and, um, so, and with your recommendations, Steve, um, I, I support that fully. And, um, it is hard when you have to talk about budgets when, when, and then we have to make sure, um, you know, that whatever funding comes down is being used for that purpose only. And so I'm glad that we took a step back, you know, to ensure that, you know, we're, we're going to be, uh, making sure that, you know, we're going to be, um, well, we're, we're held accountable. So, for number one. So anyway, I just want to say, um, thank you for the, all the departments and, um, and, um, I'm glad to be part of a board that are very smart. And, uh, and, you know, we're really seeing things, you know, and, uh, talking about things. And so I just want to say thank you for all the comments and, um, a lot of, like I said, a lot of, um, um, discussion or, um, that was presented to, uh, by other, uh, board. Um, I totally agree with their, 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 um, their, their, what they've said about the budget. So, but anyway, thank you so much. That's all I have to say. I don't want to reiterate everything. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can follow up with a couple of comments, please?
Please, Steve.
So, uh, one of the questions, of course, is, so what, what does this mean for departments and, and our constitutional offices? So as I said before, the recommendation will be to, to roll over the twenty-one budget to, for twenty-two to unfreeze the positions that are currently frozen. And to go ahead and move ahead with our compensation for employees for the three percent across the board. The work to be done will be, of course, so what, what's the path going forward? I think we always want to know what the path going forward is. Is to look at, uh, two, two pieces of it would be to look at the ARP funding. The guidance that we have reached, have we, that we have received is, is important. We're going to be sending the guidance out to all of our departments as well as, to all of you as well. To look at the areas where it's very clear that this is where there's an ARP connection, an intersection or nexus with ARP. For us to look at our current programs, and I'll emphasize the word current. To identify what are the current programs that we do have right now that could possibly be supported through ARP. That provides the opportunity not to create new programs yet, but to look at what is the opportunity for, for the investments that we've been making this last year that have been COVID related that fit within that, that area of very, very good. That, that connection has to be very, very connected, uh, very tight. By doing so, then we're able to identify some of the general fund capacity that we could then utilize, you know, somewhere else. We're not taking, we're not reducing department budgets. We're just looking at what is some of those funds that we can use in place of general fund dollars. Again, emphasizing new programs, excuse me, current programs, not new programs yet. It also provides the opportunity on the ARP front as Supervisor Fowler indicated for us to, what are the efforts that we can make in lobbying for a broader application of ARP? Particularly the area of criminal justice, infrastructure, uh, IT, and I say IT because broadband is included. Broadband is very clearly identified in ARP. But broader IT is not. And, and our argument with that is that as a result of COVID, we had to as a result and because of Matt Fowler. And in our argument with that is that as a result of COVID, we had to as a result and because of Matt Fowler's team. Create a very robust virtual environment to work from because of COVID. Significant investments went into this network that we have today. And now that we have it, how do we support it in the future? And so that's an argument that we want to make when we look at that our IT. Um, stimulus package. At the same time, we also have facilities and facilities directed by Sue Brown. Has created a, the, the very comprehensive list of facility-related. Enhancements or improvements that would, that would have a potential ARP connection. From the standpoint of not only investments in our assets, but investments in our local economy, because a lot of that work would be contracted out. And so we're looking at that as well. And then finally, the justice system, which we talked about for. And the fact that every local government has some, that some type of backlog that has been COVID-related. And then how do we not only mitigate the backlog, but also invest in the CJ system? Uh, that would be used in just time, normal times. So, so investments in, so those are the areas, the lobbying efforts that's going to take place on the art front. For, as we like to go back to departments, so what does this mean for what departments have requested? Well. But I said, we're not going to move on those. Uh, until we have clarity on the art front. And then from there, we'll be identifying how we would release the SIR capacity to the organization. We would make the necessary bu- budget adjustments at the department level. We've already in our tentative budget adopted the upper ceiling, so it's not as if though we can't spend to that. We just need to do the adjustments within the budget. Based on when the timing when we do release the increments to departments to, to execute on. Now, the timing of that, you know, I don't know right now. We don't know what that is. It could be that we're, we're, we're looking at the end of the first quarter. Our, our quarter begins on July first, the end of the first quarter begins on October. And so again, we want to make sure that we can do as much as, as much as we can as soon as we can. But you know, if some, if I'm asked, well, when is this going to happen? I'm going to say it may be, you know, at the end of the first quarter, by the time we're looking at implementing. Whatever we can based on the information we've received. Went back to the tenure plan. Uh, the tenure plan has said, has, has, has done as well. Went into the great recession, we, we had the tenure plan in place. It resulted in no layoffs. Going into the COVID pandemic, we had a tenure plan, it served us well. Going into twenty twenty-five or twenty-six, whatever the cycle for the next recession, and there will be another one. It is going to serve us well again, and that's why in a few moments, we're going to walk through the tenure plans. So to illustrate uh what our investments today look like from a budget standpoint. And and I didn't even want to use the word impact because the impact, using word impact. To me, kind of, it's kind of expresses or maybe creates this impression that it's a negative impact. It's not. It's an investment. And so when we look at impact with budget impact, we're looking at our budget numbers. Not, not an impact in a negative light, but we do need to look at the numbers for, for, for obvious reasons. And so. So again, the path going forward, uh, the, the word to departments and elected officials. Uh, all of these things that that we hope that by having the conversation today, we can then turn around. On Monday and articulate back to the organization here, the steps we're taking. Uh, it's going to take a lot of discussion. Uh, we're going to be uh asking our justice partners to work together. To create a comprehensive. Forecast of what, what the bubble looks like, what the resources are needed to address the bubble. Uh, as well as what we could do in the area of IT and facilities as well. And so these are pieces that. Work that's going to be, you know, that's in more in process now, obviously, you know, we've heard from departments and. Constitutional officers, particularly in the, in the justice area, what the resources are. And so, you know, it's not that we're not starting over again, but we're, you know, we're, we're adding and we're, we're. Building on to what's been provided at this point in time. So I'm going to. Stop at this point. Again, the light came on at two thirty-three this morning. With regard to what the discussion today before you was. And I think it's, it's important, I, I, I do want to say that. All of the work and all of the conversations and all of the discussions um are not for naught. I think we're in a really good position because now we know. Exactly what our needs are for the most part and that we need to be doing uh to address those needs and be responsible and 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 cautious at the same time. So, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you, sir.
All right. Well, actually, uh. You know, we're, we're getting to where we need to get to. We, we've got more to work through today. Uh, you know, just. Uh, just to follow up and uh after listening to each board member, uh, you know, and and their points that they uh have made, uh. You know, I'm proud of you. Uh, we have a really good, independent, everybody's independent thinking, but uh. Uh, seasoned, uh, even at this point and where we are and where we need to go. So. Uh, really appreciate that. And then again, just to reinforce for the sake of all of us, uh. You know, it, it's been outlined, uh. Uh, we see the professionalism, uh, as well as the need uh that we have within our organization. Uh, and so we truly are trying to do uh what you want to do, uh, but we'll work within um our capacity also. Uh, with that, I think uh, we're, we're about ready to, to, to move on, Steve.
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Chair members of the board, I'm going to turn it over to Siri and John and then Paul are going to pull up some information. Uh, and we'll walk through that. Um. And again, that we should be wrapping that up. Within the next hour or so. So Siri. And Siri, if you want to, please also. Um, I'd like to hear from you, some of your comments or introductory comments for related to what we just talked about. So. And I know Siri is traveling remote today, so she's trying to get um connected. It's okay.
Thank you. Of course, it got really uh busy in the background where I am. Of course, the minute, the minute that we turn it over. Um, but uh, thank you, Chair Ryan, members of the board. If um, John could go ahead and pull up the presentation.
And Siri, if I could ask you, I'd like to, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'd like to ask for Siri's thoughts on what we just, before she dives into the information. Uh, I'm, you know, as our chief financial officer, uh, your words matter a lot. And so I just want to hear from you. What your thoughts are related to what we just talked about.
Been performing miracles behind the scenes, uh. And and you're kind, you, you are the center of this. So, yeah, we certainly do want to hear from you, Siri.
Thank you, and um, thanks again, board, for the opportunity to weigh in. Um, you know, in, in hearing what Steve proposed this morning. Um, you know, I've, I've had a little bit of time now to think about it and um. I believe that the plan is probably at this point, um, our best path forward. I think in this process, you know, the timing was a lot different um compared to other years, both because of what Steve previewed early on. As far as the revenue uncertainty when we kicked off the process and then getting more information. And then the ARP and the unknowns of that. Um, I think that, you know, as we were looking at things, we, it's still very much. A puzzle that we're trying to solve because we don't know the finality of the ARP guidance and. Our ability to apply some things. And, you know, I think we just need to recognize that we, we do have real um valuable needs that are in excess of our ability to fund them. Uh, setting ARP aside, setting aside any kind of bubble or COVID-related expenses, even if we were to just boil it down to our current outlook. And the current needs, we have gaps. Um, we have to do some prioritization in order to continue to. Fund all of the things that are important because it is really all important. As Supervisor Horstman also said, there was nothing presented that um was not essential, but the problem is, is that, um, you know. Unfortunately, we have caps on the revenue side and we, um, you know, we just don't have the ability to do everything that we need to do. And so. Um, how can we utilize the ARP as an opportunity? Um, you know, to free up some capacity and to help us with those decisions. Um, is going to be an important component, and we just unfortunately did not have the runway and we, and we really still don't have all the final guidance to work that piece in. So I do think it is, um, you know, at the end of the day. A very smart approach to take a step back and be able to look at that full puzzle together rather than trying to. Piecemeal, you know, one piece in here, you know, with a big gap. It's, it's almost like that, that piece of the puzzle is in the couch cushion somewhere and we don't know where it is. So. Um, I definitely agree with the current recommendation. Um, in terms of continuing with the fiscal year twenty-one budget. And I think as we walk through the tenure plan, we'll talk a little bit more about that and why, um. Because I think there's also some things, you know, we were, we were originally recommending. To put in potential ARP, but we, we never did a scenario of what if those things need to continue beyond. The runway of ARP and the ability to spend those dollars, um, because folding those in on a recurring basis into the tenure plan um would not be a pretty picture. And so, um, it will give us again the chance to, to figure out what we can do. And what's realistic and then what can continue on. So, um. Uh, I'll definitely have more comments as we go into the tenure plan, but um, for now, I, I do want to express my support for what. Uh, County Manager Peru has proposed for today in terms of the action plan. So uh, with that, we have a, we do have some um information to share with the board today to walk through. Uh, if we can go to the next slide, please. So, uh, some of this, so we had a few requests from yesterday. Um, one of them was to review the current, that what is referred to as the county partner funding. So those agency funds and or or contributions to other agencies. So we have a handout on that. We'll go through next. Um, we were also asked to kind of reformat that budget request handout. So we do have that restructured in a way that hopefully. Makes sense to the board. Now it is based on the original county manager recommendations. And so, um, you know, it, you can take it that part for what it's worth, but it does put things into the funding bucket for where. Um, they were either proposed or recommended to be funded as requested. And then we have a couple ten-year scenarios that might help illustrate again. Um, some of the things we've been talking about today. So, um, if we can pull up the county partner funding first.
Let's see, who's doing?
John. Great. Um, so what you're looking at here is a five-year history of actual allocations. Along with the fiscal year twenty-two baseline funding for our county partners. Um, just for background, so this is a mixed bag really of um partner funding where some of it is related more towards. I TAs that we have um for participation in different entities, for example, uh, NAFTA. Annual membership, that's related to our membership on the NAFTA board. Um, and other things are a little more um. Discretionary in the fact that they're not tied to an agreement, but they are things that the board has uh communicated to the agencies that. The funding would continue um as sort of a baseline funding for fiscal year twenty-two. Ultimately, of course, the board has uh, has the ability to alter these allocations. Um, but in, in the cases where I GAs exist, that's a little less flexible because we're committed through the IGA for funding. So if we can walk through, um, the, the first bucket is Alliance and we fund, um, make a payment to the Alliance, basically a contribution. But it's tagged for the items listed. So the, the Flagstaff After School Program for students is the first one. We also have an Economic Policy Institute Membership. A Coalition for Youth and Children and Flagstaff Arts Council. So those are those first four. Um, and I believe the amount is eighty-five thousand for that, if you were to total them all up. The next one is our um extension funding with the U of A, and this is the operations piece. So uh, again, just taking a look at the way that this is funded, we have kind of our base recurring membership type expenses, but as we scroll down. Um, if you wouldn't mind, thank you. We also have some one-time allocations. So this is one. That came to as a request to continue what had been allocated is um a limited term funding for. The position, the for each position in page. Um, so you can see that fiscal year twenty-two column does not have a number in it right now. Uh, the board discussion so far had been to either encourage that through CI or again. Um, you know, if there does end up being potential for ARP to support that, that could be a potential source, but as of right now, it is not in their baseline allocation. Um, so again, uh, if we could go back up to the top there. Thanks. Um, so that's, so there's, there's sometimes there are two pieces, I guess. Um, of those allocations depending on what has been kind of the commitment or the recurring amounts. And then, um. You know, when special needs have come up or special items for funding, those are usually more on a limited term basis. And so those are listed in the one-time allocations. Uh, we have our, our CP WAC, our Colorado Plateau Water Advisory Council. Econa, so FMPO, all of these really are kind of membership or baseline-driven items, uh, NACOD. Again, tied to I GAs and agreements that we have with these agencies. Um, then NAFTA. We have a Guidance Center Partnership and then the Greater Flagstaff Force Partnership. So be, before we move on, I'll, I'll pause on those because those really are those that are tied to a membership type item. Are there? Are there questions or discussions the board would like to have on any of those items?
Not seeing anybody bubble up right now. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, so then our next section, we have United Way Funding, which is another area where we have broken it out into different components. Um. There's the administration piece of, um, of the grant allocation. And then we have what, what is listed as agency funding, and that's really the funding um that is made available. For applications from different nonprofits to get um funding from United Way in conjunction with, I believe they do it in conjunction with the City of Flagstaff Funds. So that's kind of the baseline um. Community funding that the county has contributed over time. You'll also notice the VITA, and so that was the uh income tax preparation. Program because it was discontinued and the funding then is not in the budget. It was not in the budget for fiscal year twenty-one, or it wasn't funded for fiscal year twenty-one because the program. Was no longer being administered administered through the United Way of Northern Arizona. And it was, is not planned to for FY twenty-two, so that, that figure has been taken out. And then again, um, down below, we see in the one time, there have been other initiatives through United Way. The board has chosen to fund over the years. They were. Pilot programs or other um limited-term allocations. So again, those are not currently in for fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, because they were a limited term or one-time in nature. Um, so we can see that all of the one-time allocations currently are, are blank. Um, so again. Just want to turn it back over to the board for, for comment or perhaps affirmation of the um budget as it, as it exists basically in the baseline kind of sense.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, comments, questions?
Hey, uh, check in with the board uh first. On that, go ahead, Patrice.
Yeah, and thank you, Siri, for this information. And, you know, obviously. Uh, our partnership with uh other organizations, whether it be the city or CCC or NAU or um. Uh, some of our nonprofits, you know, what they do is they help to serve. And provide services and needs to our community, uh, that quite frankly. Uh, many times we'd have to pick up a loan uh as the county. So I, I do think these partnerships with um. The city, with CCC, with NAU, uh, and with our nonprofits are really important to, to continue. Obviously. They aren't to add a huge amount, as you can see, but I think they do provide huge benefits to our community. So. Uh, thank you for this information. I think it's important to maintain these partnerships, needless to say, may. Maintain our memberships as well in, in the various organizations that so serve our community. So thanks, Siri.
All right, others. Yeah, go ahead, Judy.
Um, I also feel the same way that, you know, we should be able to, um. These one-time allocations that have um zero budget, a budget amounts and or FY twenty-two. Somehow, um, I think, you know, we really need to keep these services out there for the people in our communities. Um, so I just want to say, um. If there's, it's a, if it's for the general public, you know, it's important to me, you know, as a, as a board member. So that's all I want to say. And then also the membership, the membership portion of it, I think is very important too. And um, let's see, I'm doing now, I think these one, the one, the United Way VITA, um, the application, um. For non, you know, people to apply United Way of New Arizona, but I don't income taxes. You know, I, is that the one? You know, I, is that the one that Paige is doing or is it where is these, these services at?
So Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bigay. So while United Way of Northern Arizona is not doing the VITA program this year through Supervisor Fowler's efforts and the fact that she is, she loves to do taxes, I don't know why, but she loves to do taxes. Her and Miranda, they have actually continued providing income tax services in the Page area and also in Fredonia and in within that, and also within, I think, the two city areas as well. So I would turn over to Supervisor Fowler, but I think she had to drop off.
Yeah, she she just did. She texted me like one minute ago to say she had to hop off to do her presentation. She'll be back, but yeah.
Okay, but if the services are being done and stuff like that, I guess that's, as long as it's being done somewhere, I guess it's okay. Okay.
Judy, can I hop on that question with you? Would you mind?
What was that?
Can I hop on that question with you? I want to follow up on what you're talking about there.
No.
All right. Thank you, Judy. So Steve, it does beg the question of our folks were talking about, we can't do a full program, but they were talking about where it might be housed in in the future and what the transition is. It'd be interesting just to get the the background of what what transpired. Great opportunity for folks to to bring, you know, to get money they didn't even realize that so benefits them, you know, which goes back into the community, but it's it's really helps a lot of people that are marginalized on it. So just be interesting to see where that was.
And I can respond quickly, I believe. But so the, so income tax services were provided through various organizations here in Flagstaff. It's the, I think it was Northern Arizona Tax Services, which is another nonprofit headed by Tom Broderick and the group there. They've been doing taxes for, my gosh, 20 some years. Also ARP was doing, not not the ARP we're talking about, the another ARP.
The seniors?
Yes, the senior ARP group, they also have an income tax component of their program. They do it throughout the organization. Up on Hopi, the Hopi Foundation, Monica Nuvamsa and her team, they were also doing taxes in in the Hopi area. Eastern Abajo County, Western Coconio County area. So that's a really important program. And so we do, through our efforts here at the county, want to push that information out. So we'd be looking at when we do a publication. You know, for timing our report to citizens or some kind of information, we'd be pushing out that information broadly to to our county residents so that they would know the resources for income tax preparation.
That's, that's great news. It's, you know, showing that we're not always the best group or maybe we were to help you know, through, actually, it was Supervisor Archuleta that brought this to the county, get it started, but now that it started in the community, spin it off when it's appropriate. So that that would be great, just being the partner to convey the information. Thank you. I interrupted your questions though, Judy. Do you have any more on that or others? Not hearing. I'm gonna, Steve, I'm gonna ask another piece. So it looks like we're withdrawing some allocations associated with Kinder Camp, associated with Launch and all. Have we had those conversations with the organizations and made them aware of that?
That, you know, that predates me, but I can certainly confirm that with with Carol Dykes at United Way. They are providing Kinder Camp that is coming back. It didn't happen last year because of COVID. But Kinder Camp is taking place this summer. So I can reach out to them today to confirm that and see if that budget figure needs to be revised.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please.
Well, you know, for whatever it's worth, I sat on the Launch Board for many years and I know Judy is now on it. And Launch is proceeding and they're doing their pre-K program with through FUSD. I don't know what the numbers are. I don't know if Judy's got an update on that, but I know both Kinder Camp and Launch are in fact going forward here in 2020, this next fiscal year.
So I can reach out to Paul Klippenstein on that too, just to confirm.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, if the transition occurred and if if it hadn't, it begs that question, Steve. How would it, you know, what would have been the best thing for it? So just checking to see if we we can do that follow up related to that. And then more of a, you know, I know we have a limited budget and therefore we we can't continue to fund everybody. Aspirational areas are, you know, again, some of these agencies or programs are looking at those areas where, you know, social determinants are a big component. And and sometimes these are the critical programs that if given a little bit of money works. So if we've had the conversations, I'm fine. If we hadn't, it might be one that, you know, we have, we get an update just to see.
We, we, Chair, we actually, I just got a text from Kim Musselman. She has some background information on the United Way allocations. If we could, with your, with your permission, we could promote her to panelists so she can respond. She might have some insight on on the two year funding that you see here.
That, yeah, if you could, that that would, I think that would be good. So the board's aware of, you know, these organizations because we haven't been through, I don't think we've had an outside agency conversation.
So Kim is here. Kim, can you respond, please?
Yes, thank you. And for whatever reason, oh, there's my camera. Sorry about that. I just want, what I will say, I was involved in these conversations in two fiscal years ago as we were formulating this base budget. With respect to the Kinder Camp, I'm not aware, and again, I think this is a follow up with Carol, but of any additional request around Kinder Camp, but these, both of the Kinder Camp and the Launch in particular were part of an agreement that the county had entered into for a two year seed money agreement. And so that is what is reflected there on that spreadsheet for fiscal year 20 and then fiscal year 21. And I have only had intermittent ability to participate in Launch over the course of this past year. So I don't know where that sits. Obviously Supervisor Horstman probably has more knowledge about that, but just so that you know, that is why those were the two year amounts and that, to my knowledge, there had not been additional asks related to those two programs.
So a lot of times, you know, we work together with organizations, we help to do the startup. Gradually work through transition. It begs the question if if we've had those conversations and you know, that they've become functional or not, you know, I would encourage us just to just check back with us and and see on it. And if not, what is the conversation associated with it? The one other, well, there are many other, but long term conversation, this is aspirational. This is not the year to do it, but I would hope over time, the FACS program happens with Flag Unified School District. City of Flagstaff pulls in the lion's share. We were able to supplement the area over in loop for our investment associated with it. I would love to see us over time trying to and grow a program with partners in other communities. This is a program that just so enables you know, working parents, most often the mother of the family, but not, not always. But it enables them to actually be functional in the workforce. And so this isn't the year, but it's it's one of those aspirational ones that I just want to put a little tag in there that I hope we, you know, as we get into conversations, get into our broader priorities. We have a lot of them, you can see with our budgets, but when it comes to areas that not only affect us, but affect, well, it affects our own workforce, but goes beyond that. So.
If I may, Chair Ryan, I agree with you so much. I think that FACS program has really been key and instrumental for so many of our folks here in Coconio County that really need this service. And and yes, I know now is not the time. I keep hearing caution, caution, caution. Well, Roger, so you know, anyway, it's, but yes, I agree with you. It's a great program.
And Chair Ryan?
Yeah, go ahead, Judy.
I'm not sure we're accepting any more items for the board retreat. I think this would be a good topic to be added on to that just for if this one, the information, the stuff that we're talking about right now.
We can do that.
All right, good idea. All right. Any others from the board? Now that I'm consuming the time of the meeting here. Sorry about that. These are good things though, and and just making sure that, you know, if we're transitioning out of programs, let's make sure we're doing it well. Yeah, and I'm not hearing from others. So go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Chair, back to Siri. We'll go to the next slide.
Yes, thanks, John. If we can pull up the presentation again. So the next section we're going to go into is a reminder again on the, on the initial county manager recommendation and then the revised county manager recommendation. Waiting for, waiting for the PowerPoint here in a second.
Yeah. So on this particular slide, on these slides, though, when we get into the scenarios, let me just see which screen we're looking at first. So this is again, going back to Mr. Chairman, to Siri and others, this is just a reminder or just a reminder to us from the budget recommendation, the compensation strategies. We talked about the 3% market, the targeted compression, the investment. So when we talk, what's happening on July 1st, we're doing, we're proceeding with, of course, when freezing positions, we're proceeding with the market increase. I do however want to hold off on the on the market adjustments at this point in time. We just, we'll need more discussion with departments in assessing where we have the the hotspots, if you will. But the other components of it would be effective, the 3% market would be effective on July 1st, as we discussed. But again, the 250 is set aside for this purpose, but but we're not going to move on that exactly on July 1st. I'd like to get more background on this. Okay, thank you. From there, going down the list again, these were the original recommendations that we, that were in the first proposal to the board. And so you'll just see the, you can see the list there. I don't know that I need to go through everything that's on the slide here. So then the next slide, Siri. So with the tenure plan, other modifications that we've built into the tenure plan based on the conversations in the last two weeks. The Dark Sky FT contribution, this is a position we share with the City of Flagstaff for their, for their work in the Dark Sky Ordinance area. Community initiatives, consideration of of increasing the per district allocation by the amount that you see, the 5,000. Advocacy travel for the board in their national associations, National Association of Counties, Association of Counties, Western Interstate Region, lobbying efforts with with at the federal level and is in this area. And then also, looking at our reserve policy, and this was a discussion from day one. What is, what is a reasonable yet necessary reserve to have? And you'll see when we look at the tenure plan, what those scenarios look like based on the possible additions to to the budget through the, through the budget process and included in the tenure plan. Okay, next. From recent discussions, we looked at additional positions with the Sheriff's Department and additional positions in the IT Department. And you, you, these were based on the discussions and the feedback we received in the last few days. And so again, just a confirmation or reaffirmation of these were the additions that were, that we were asked to consider. The next slide. Now I'm turning this over to Siri. This is where it gets too, too technical for me. Siri?
Steve, so the next two slides, and it is sort of hard to draw the differentiation, but we had on the prior slides, the assumptions that go into each of these. So this is just a visual graphic of the county manager recommendation. And I think it will be important to look at the individual 10 year plans to really see this. But based on our current assumptions, again, with those recommendations that were just reviewed, this is what it looks like in terms of the revenue being that solid black line and the expenditure outlook being the dashed red line. So we can see even with the original recommendations, we did not have a long term structurally balanced budget proposal. We acknowledged in those recommendations that there would still be work to do to bring those lines together so that that red dash expenditure in the black, especially in particular, if you look at the very out years. They had not converged and they really would continue to have a gap between them based on our our current outlook. So understanding that we had other areas to address in terms of you know, potential fee increases or changes in the way that we recover indirects, for example, and we were very limited on the revenue side of things where we can make adjustments. And then what kind of out, long term investments we could make to perhaps relieve some pressure on the expenditure side in terms of mandates. County Manager Peru also, you know, talked about taking just a zero base kind of a look in the future to get to to figure out, you know, are there things that we should consider maybe holding off on or changing the way we do them in order again to bring those lines together. So that was, that's our initial tenure that we will go over in a second, but we'll go to the next slide first. And then just to show the comparison, and it's hard to, it's hard to see because of the dash line, but again, that that gap does grow, the scale of it doesn't illustrate it as much, but as we put it, the more things we put in, the more the gap grows in terms of the structural difference between revenues and expenditures. So I'd like to pause and go to the first 10 year plan, which is the county manager with with the county manager recommendations to kind of see what that looks like. Because I think there's some important things to highlight on the tenure plan itself. So this first one is the county manager recommendations. And again, just a reminder to orient everyone to what this, what we're really looking at. In the top section, we're looking at revenues and transfers in. So those are the resources coming into the general fund. We have a solid black box around our budget and our forecasts. As a reminder, we set a very, very conservative revenue outlook. So while it's great news that we're exceeding that forecast, I would just remind everyone again, there's some one time things going into those resources in terms of federal reimbursements for some of our COVID expenditures. Arizona Cares Money, also, there's some one time happening in the numbers that we're seeing there. And then the next block under the expenditures and transfers out shows the different categories of our expenditures. And again, we're, we are trending below our budgeted expenditures and transfers out. But when we factor in curiores, so those are things that are currently in the budget for fiscal year 21 that are basically going to be subtracted from the 21 budget and moved into FY22 because they were not fully expended towards the project where they were allocated, we get very close to being at our expenditure budget. So our change in fund balance, when that's a negative, it's a use of fund balance. And when it's a positive, it's an increase in fund balance. So looking at, looking just again, stopping at fiscal year 21 for just a minute. And we have a beginning fund balance. This is, this is everything. So this is unrestricted and this is reserved as well. We were originally budgeting to dip into that fund balance with all the uncertainty on the revenue and not knowing about the Arizona Cares at that time or, you know, the timing of some of the federal reimbursements. Because of the turnaround in revenue we've seen, fortunately, we are looking to increase our fund balance this year. And so we are projecting that at the end of fiscal year 21, and when I say we, I really mean organizationally, we're dependent on forecast information that comes in from departments about revenue and expenses as well. So when we put all of that together, it looks as though we will end fiscal year 21 with 27 million of general fund balance. So you can see that right there under that FY21 forecast column, ending fund balance. So that's our general fund resources at the end of the year. Then, as we move forward, this is really where we're getting into our forecast periods or outlook. And with the county manager recommendations and Supervisor Horstman also pointed this out, that And with the county manager recommendations and Supervisor Horstman also pointed this out, that next year looks okay. Next year looks like another positive change in fund balance. However, you know, if we do some sensitivity on this, there are a few things to consider. For one, we still have an assumption of continued revenue growth. Because we've been seeing that as we get our numbers every month, we've seen that our revenue has continued to recover. And so we expect that to happen in fiscal year 22 because of the infusion of stimulus dollars into the economy. And that will translate basically into taxable sales that will help our revenues. If that does not happen, if that assumption does not carry through, because maybe, you know, it, the impact of the stimulus isn't as immediate, or perhaps it just doesn't have the effect on taxable sales versus non-taxable like consulting services or things where, you know, there is not a sales tax translation. We could face a risk of not having that positive, you know, with building all of these expenditures in. We very well could have a use of fund balance if both the state shared and the local go the other direction and they do not have an increase from fiscal year 21 forecast, but they actually decline. So always, you know, this is our best forecast based on the information that we have in front of us, but it's not a guarantee. And so, so we have a balanced budget when we look at the recommendations for fiscal year 22. But again, a balanced budget going back to day one does not necessarily just mean the upcoming year. It means that the long-term sustainability. So if we can go all the way to fiscal year 30 on the, on the right-hand side, what it looks like is this, so this is a year of full recovery in fiscal year 30. This is where we looked at our revenues, basically having that, being at that kind of sustainable growth baseline, meaning you know, what is our, what, what is a typical revenue, taking out bubbles for or revenue we're seeing in excess of what are, what we might typically see based on population inflation because of additional spending on taxable items. But also, taking out any potential recession or economic downturn. So really that baseline level. So when we look at that for fiscal year 30, what we see is 89.8 million of revenue forecasted as kind of that sustainable baseline. But with these additions, we see expenditures forecasted at 91 million. So again, this is not representing any, any bubble or any recession. This is just a baseline structural difference between our resources coming in and our resources going out. Now again, you know, this is not an exact, by any means, this is our best outlook based on the information we have. However, I think John Comer said it really nicely when he said, you know, the further though we deviate from this, the more risk there is. So the more we get into that presentation of having revenues be lower than expenditures, the greater the risk is that we cannot sustain the budget that we're building. And so, you know, we have to also come up with what is our realistic margin of error. But that margin of error can also go both directions. So again, you know, is a million dollars a reasonable margin of error? Could we, could we find solutions that equate to that long-term million dollars? You know, we felt that it, it's on the stretch end for sure, but that we, we could probably look at solutions to balance that. And so that was what the county manager's recommendation was based on. But again, what we're trying to avoid is increasing the budget and then having to do layoffs, recurring reductions, things like that. And so we would definitely, it would take some work, but we, we could probably get there. However, again, as we look at some of the initial recommendations, we did have the use of American Rescue Plan funding for both things that were one-time in nature. But also things that very well could have set an expectation of being recurring in nature. So for example, position increases outside of what was originally recommended. Those would increase that deficit. Also, you know, we've talked about maybe phasing in additional deputies or additional IT staffs. What you see in front of you does not allow for that additional capacity. It really is truly adding those items and then almost having a freezer, a hold on any kind of growth in staffing, programs, new initiatives, anything beyond what we're already doing. Because we've built in those inflationary costs to maintain the services that we're already providing. So I want to, I want to pause before I go to the other outlook and just make sure that makes sense and see if there's any questions on that so far.
Siri, could, could I add a couple of comments that I think were, as I learned, you know, many years ago, in terms of this process, that I think were also really helpful for me, a couple of really key figures here in the tenure. And John, if you could scroll to the left a little bit first. So down at the bottom here, you see our fund balance. It says unreserved and emergency reserve. That emergency reserve, correct, Siri, is the 15% against revenues that we put into the, into the budget, so to speak, every year. So, and then the unreserved is whatever's left over between your ending funds. So if you look at the ending fund balance line. And then let's go down to the right here, John, if you could scroll back over to, let's, let's, let's just take in FY28 if you look down. So you can see our ending fund balances basically 15.8 million. And our reserves based on the 15 still, right, Siri? That is not, or is, or did you escalate that at all?
Um, yes, this plan does include the proposed increase to 20%.
To 20%, okay. So that includes that 20% emergency reserve. But what you can see is that we don't have in fund balance to cover our emergency reserve. There's a 500,000 gap between what we would have to cover that emergency reserve. Now, in any given year, we may not need that emergency reserve. Some years we've had to use the emergency reserve, some years we haven't, right? So, because that includes the revenue smoothing that gets us through the recessions as well. So I think for me, I, what I'm always concerned about is that do we have adequate resources to cover our reserve? Now, this is, you know, the eighth, ninth, and 10 years out, or the seventh, eighth, ninth year, 10 years out, right? So as Siri's saying, we have some capacity to manage that, I'll say deficit over that timeframe. And, and, but, but I think it's important to understand that that as the board, you, you know, you will be, so a board will be held accountable to managing that deficit over time. And if there are emergencies that we have in the intervening years, we may have to utilize those funds. Certainly during the downturn, we may have to utilize those funds to retain our service levels, right? So I think that's a really important piece to understand about this. It was really important to me when I understood it. And I think just one other reflection is, is that that, that is, that really is fundamental to this tenure planning, right, is to understand that and, and build that, that capacity in. So thank you, Siri.
Yeah, and so. Okay, so, yeah, I was, so in the beginning of these budget sessions, when I was asking for, can you play out a position in the, in the long term, we only showed that position. But what I, I was trying to do, I, my, my, my brain thought it, but my mouth didn't say it, was this is where you start seeing the implication of a single position. So if you remember yesterday, when we were talking about the deputies, since it's so fresh in our mind on it, we, if we wanted six deputies, that would be a million dollars that's played out over that, a little bit over, I think, were the figures the sheriff gave. So I'm not giving exact or anything like that. But it's just the example of, so if you start to see where the deficit is, you know, it's compounded by that million dollars. So each FTE that we start to add on is it 100,000, it starts to compound that deficit over time. So when we get to the tenure plan, that's, that's where FTEs, they, they're so important, but they also have implications in a sustained way on what we're doing. The only other piece that as we're looking about at this, and we're trying to be wise managers of the budget. The graphs that had been displayed earlier showed that, you know, our revenues are below our expenditures. And in the long term, you know, as exemplified through various line items. You know, you don't want to be there. You, you definitely want to bring those together and get your revenues above it. So that's, that's just that, you know, cautionary, you know, as we go through these discussions. You know, I really appreciate the manager's recommendations that we had, but as we continue our discussions, any add-ons, they really do have, they start to affect these out years in a negative way. Let, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
But just a comment on revenues. And so our, our forecasting of revenues is based on the revenues we have today. So when we look at what are the potential new sources of revenue? You know, we get to at some point in time, you know, going back, because we can only do the right, that, that, we can only manage the revenues that are, that are given to us through the existing resources. So counties do not have the authority, unlike charter cities and others, to, to, to create new sources of revenue. So, you know, whatever we do, we need to go back to the legislature and, and have that discussion in years and years ago. This has been a 30-year discussion. You know, does, at, at what point does the, does the, do counties then have the authority to know that we're a subdivision of the state? But it kind of gets back to, you know, we have a state government with a $3 billion surplus. And yet we've got a county here that is going to be, you know, having a revenue, you know, revenue realities that are hitting us today. And at some, at some point, and I'm not certainly, I'm not an elected official to say this, but you know, at some point, we need to begin the dialogue with the legislature to say, you know, it's not happening at the local level with regard to, to the, the revenue picture that you're seeing at state level. And so I guess the point being is that, you know, what are the new sources of revenue that we can look at in the future? And what are the, you know, advocacy efforts to at least begin those discussions? At some point in the next 10 years, there has to be a new source of revenue for counties. Thank you.
And to follow that is, that's our battle zone we're in at the legislature with CSA every year. Legislation, you get 2,000 bills and a lot of them are, have implications for counties. You know, and they whittle it down, but we're in a defense posture. And, you know, as we were talking about this year, we're trying to get an adjustment for ACJC. It's, it's these long-term discussions of where we're paying an unfunded mandate and/or a revenue element that we definitely want to be on the front end of it. But I'm starting to wander further afield, but they, they all play back to just what we're talking about right now, our budget. So why don't, why don't we go ahead and roll through the soup's response to the tenure plan? Let, let me just do what I've been doing, Patrice. I'll, I'll go with Heranimo next and we'll swing into you in the end here. And, and Lena left, Frau, Lena left at 10:07 and she just came back a minute ago. So you can do that for your, your minutes there. Let's see, Heranimo.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just looking at this tenure forecast and whatnot. It's something new to me to see, look at projections that far out. And so I appreciate the ability to do so. It does show, as, as you were saying, Supervisor Ryan, about how the, the compounding effect of FTEs when we add them. And so, you know, definitely cognizant of that and, you know, realizing that we can't create new streams of revenue. We have to, we have to, it's, it's just a reminder that we definitely need and want to stay on the conservative side. When making our plans, when making our budgets, just because, you know, if, if these forecasts go as planned, we might have a little extra, but if they don't, we don't want to be caught in a hole. So again, thank you for, for laying it out this way. I really appreciate being able to see that far ahead in the future. Thank you.
Maya on?
No, Mr. Chair, you made it.
Judy, before, before you get going, I forget who's managing, I think Alex, but please let Lena into the panelist. Judy, you're up.
I was gonna say, there he goes again. Okay, I'm trying to understand this here. Okay, under the, the FY21, the budget amount, this is all set according to revenues, is what you're saying, right? How much money you brought in that was there available for us to use for FY21 budget? So this is based on the amount of dollars that this is, these numbers are the amount of dollars that we got. And what you're forecasting is what you're going, this is how much you're going to be spending.
Right.
Okay, okay. Understood. Okay, I just want to say, yeah. I think, you know, we really have to be conservative. We really have to be conservative. Looking at this outlook right now, it really means, it shows a lot. And so we cannot have a negative balance in our reserves and, and our emergency reserves. We need to have some kind of cushion, you know, later on. So that really means, how are we gonna have the departments structure themselves to, you know, really, really look at doing just, just doing, I remember yesterday I made a comment about mandates. What are their mandates that they have, that they have to do with the funds that, that we are getting? And work around that as something that is priority and then go down. I know a lot of times, you know, when you're in a department, everything else comes down and you're told to do this and that, but you know, you're not really, there's no funding, you know, for the staff to be doing that. And so I think in, in this case, we, we had to really look at reserves and and we can't, you know, maybe we should take it off the books so that we don't see it. So we know that there's going to be some in there. But anyway, I just want to say, it was a good presentation. I understand it and I just want to make sure that, you know, we have some cushion at the end to lean on and, you know, for further, for further staff that are going to be here to do the services and providing services to our constituents. And it's very important that we do, you know. And, and the art funding is going to really help us. And I just want to say, you know, that whatever we can do to, to fund dollars into that art funding would be great from the general fund so that we can possibly use some of that for more reserves or something like that. So I just want to say thank, that's it. And I think once, thank you, the, the staff for doing the presentation as far as finances are concerned. And, you know, it's our responsibility to ensure that we get some, at, at least some adequate funding into the programs that are there, especially the ones that are mandated. And so thank you very much.
I'm muted. There we go. Thank you, Judy. Next up, we have Vice Chair Fowler, Lena.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve and staff. Thank you for the, just the thoughtfulness that is you know, put into developing our budget. All the meetings that have taken place literally all year and and that's how all of these budgets have been put together. Ten-year plan really gauges the, how much we spend and rolling it out. And as we can see, you know, when we were talking about all the extras that we wanted to put in, it put us in the red. And now, you know, with the recommendation and from our manager and the finance team, it has, we have somewhat a reasonable tenure plan again. So it is very important that we are really pay attention to to the dollars that we allocate and how we're going to, you know, how we're going to position our county for the next 10-year, the next recession. These, this is what we look at with our tenure plan. So thank you again, Steve, and thank you to finance team and all the departments that have worked on this for all year. As Steve says, you know, once we approve the budget, this, this, you know, the meeting start again for the next budget. This year and has been unusual. And then, you know, through the whole process of you putting budget together, the pandemic was happening at the same time. So many things were on on your minds and so many events. So many things were on, um, on your minds and so many events has happened unexpectedly. And yet through all of that, you're able to present a budget to the board very thoughtfully. Uh, pointed out all the stories and what told us all the things that the department has gone through. And what your needs are. We know those needs are real. We know that if, if we had the money, we'd be able to fund everything. But without your understanding, this is where we're at right now. Just wanted, we just want to be able to, uh, keep our county safe and make sure that we, we are paying attention to. Make sure our budget is sound and balanced and be able to deliver all the service to their, our constituents. To our, to our residents, um, in county. So thank you so much. Thank you, Steve.
All right. Uh, thank you, Lena. Uh, next up, uh, Patrice, Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, and, uh, yes, this is a, a lot, uh, to digest. And it does certainly show how, uh, one decision, once, one small decision, especially with regards to an FTE. Can, um, uh, play havoc with the ten-year budget down the road. So, um, uh, obviously I get that and, and I think we're in very uncertain times. And, and I know that we had a, um, we, we, we got a little cherry thrown to us with ARP. But we still have to be careful. And so I get it and I get the words of caution. Um, you know, I, I know we've talked about this and, and again, I think it's really good to be conservative. That's why I love this ten-year plan that has a built-in recession. And if we don't have those recessionary years in twenty-four, twenty-five, which are shown there, we can always move that forward. And that may give us, um, a little bit of, of play, if you will, or leeway. When we're, when we're creating, uh, that twenty-four budget or twenty-five FY twenty-five budget. So, I mean, I think that it is a, um, I, I know sometimes when you're, um, sitting in a department. And you're looking at the bottom line, uh, for FY twenty-one, which is showing a positive, um, ending fund balance. Um, and they're going, why, why can't we spend that? Uh, and I, I think that the reason why is because of what history shows us. And what over time, uh, we've been able to survive as a county because of this ten-year budgetary plan. So I'm a really big fan of that and, and so pleased to see the county doing that. And I think it's important to serve our community going forward. I, I continue to have, have a question and I, and it's not that I'm against it. I believe in being conservative in managing our taxpayers and our communities' money. Um, but that emergency reserve, switching it from fifteen to twenty. And Siri, I think you told me, and I can't remember, and I tried to find it in my notes, that's an additional, what percent? Being withheld under the emergency reserves?
Uh, thank you Supervisor Horstman, it, it increases it by five percent. So total, right now we're at fifteen, it brings it up to twenty percent.
No, I understand that. I'm so sorry. I would like to know the dollar amounts that that, that five percent translate into how many dollars?
Sure, um, it's depending on the year because it is revenue-based, it's between.
Right.
Five million and four million.
Four to five million?
Three and a half to four million.
Three to four.
And Siri, it goes up to twenty, starting next year, or is it metered out over the next several years? That's.
Where, um, this outlook has it, um, increasing in fiscal year twenty-two, it's the twenty percent. Um, but again, you know, it could be phased in, there's, there are definitely options.
Because we did talk about that. So, and, and Steve, I, I tell you, I'm, I'm gonna look to you as the county manager on this. I mean, there are needs, there are needs now, we need to be careful. I know we need to be conservative. I know we have that caution light. Um, do we need to be taking the full, uh, and I know Siri is recommending this. I know that the recommendation is just, hey, what happens if we end up with another Schultz? Uh, what happens if we end up with another catastrophe, God forbid? Um, um, but is this something that we need to take now? Uh, especially because we already do have our ten-year budgetary plan and a recessionary period built in. Is it something we can phase over time? Um, and, and I'm really gonna be looking to you for that, because it's, it, it's a question to me. I, I mean, I love the ten-year budgetary plan, I love the conservative approach. But are we, are, are, are we denying the services? Because of adding another five percent to the emergency reserves that we may need now? And, and I don't know the answer to that, so I'm really looking to you for that.
Um, Mr. Chair, shall I, should, should I respond now, or do you want me to wait for other board comments?
Uh, actually, let's say, uh, we're, we are, so you're gonna give a presentation on that, right, Steve? Right? Or are you coming back to that one?
Not as, not for today, I mean, w- we know that it, the desire of the board is to revisit that, to possibly look at different phase-in options. Let me just go ahead and respond.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say then respond, yeah, that would be good. And, and I probably want to, you know, throw two cents in, but yeah, go ahead.
So when we look, when we're looking at our reserve, emergency reserve, unreserved, the, the piece that's not yet known is. Going, it's gonna go back to what we've said before, you know, what, what are the obligations gonna be regarding? Um, um, dealing with the justice bubble? And then what are the, what are, what are we gonna be able to do with art? Now that is, again, tho- those are, in, in some ways, they're, they're similar in that. The circumstances for each have, have a, have a beginning and a possible end. Now with art funding as a revenue, it does have a beginning and it does have a hard stop, December of twenty-four. With dealing with our justice, uh, system and, and the case flow, if you will. It is, it's described from our professionals in the justice field as a bubble. So it, it should have a beginning that we have now. It should also have at some point where it's grad, where the bubble is being taken care of. So, so, you know, again, we don't know what that is. So for, for, for me to say, uh, well, for us to look at the unreserved and the emergency reserve. Those, those are, those are, that is funding that we would be looking at to help us buffer. What those impacts are going to be. So, so, you know, so being able to respond to, do we need the fifteen versus the twenty? Uh, I, I think it's gonna be a matter of what, what is, what are the answers to the first two questions look like first? Before I, before I would say, yes, we can phase it in, or you, or, or we should go from one to the next in the course of one budget year. Uh, so, because, because again, all the resources that we have is on this sheet here. But, but to repeat myself, apologies, we don't know what the expense side is related to. Um, the bubble as well as what our, um, funding is gonna look like after art. When it goes away in twenty twenty-four, whatever we have invested in, we have to have some sustainability to it. Or make a choice. You know, that's, it's, it's, budgets are, are in some ways, it's, it's a matter of choices that are made. Went back to what is mandated versus what is discretionary. You know, that's clearly outlined in statute. It is tru- completely outlined in statute, what we can do, everything beyond that is discretionary. Of course, that is the call of the board, but the reminder is, does, does that represent who we are? You know, if we're gonna only provide mandated services, this organization is very different than it does today. But does, does that reflect who we are to the community and others? So I'll, I'll conclude my remarks there, Mr. Chair.
So is, is it correct to say then, Steve, it's our savings account because of the uncertainties of where we're, we're looking at going forward with, with ARP in the bubble?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, you know, I want to hop in and other board members, uh, from a, a discussion perspective. But, um, you know, serious recommendations are associated with best practices, which we've, uh, also often been on the front end of. And, and it's, uh, it's helped us, but we've also gotten creative. Uh, as I look at, the more we put expenditures, uh, above the revenue. The more we need a reserve, uh, on it. Uh, and so to lessen our reserve and to expand the expenditure component. Uh, you know, I see we would be moving further and further away from, uh, uh, you know, that, that which, which has served us. Uh, not only during the downturns, uh, but, you know, that long-term forecasting that we have associated with it. Um, you know, it looks like, uh, Siri, or did you want to comment? I see you're popping up too. Okay, uh, let me check in, other board members, do you want to, any comments? I can't see it. Yeah, go ahead, Lena.
Yeah, you know, this year's budget also, we have to remember the loss, uh, not just in the court fees and the other fees within the department. We've also lost the, this is the year the impact from the NGS closer, closure has, um, hit us. And in our special districts, not just us, but throughout our county. And it, so that has a huge impact on our budget. So that's another reason that, that we have to, even though we have projected it in the ten-year plan. We had to, we have to really feel the impact this year.
So, um, others?
I do have a comment after the board members, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
And I, I just wanted to, to say that, that I, I'm in support of adding to the reserve fund, you know, um, considering what the. The un, um, unforeseeable future and things that may or may not happen. I know we built it into, uh, the plan a couple of years down the road, but I still think that it's a good idea for us to try to save more. Uh, to have as a rainy day fund as we need. Well, thank you.
Judy?
I, 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 I'm sorry, I don't have a comment at this time.
Okay. And, and, you know, as Steve had mentioned, uh, you know, we'll have it brought back to us, uh, in terms of, you know, are we doing it? Um, well, you know, hoping by the end of the day, you know, to hear, uh, but if we don't have it by the end of the day, are we doing it in portions? Uh, or, um, uh, or, or how are we doing it, you know? And we're talking about starting next year, but, uh, uh, we, we do need to, you know, pull that one back around.
I think, um, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think, um, um, maybe that would be something for our board retreat, um, that we do next week.
Well, that, yeah, okay. Yeah, go ahead. He has a board, yeah, I, I would say the, the board retreat is more, uh. Uh, an, an opportunity for us to work on items that are more specific associated with the board. The, the county-wide pieces, uh, are, are ones that we would want to bring back at a different meeting if we don't do them before then. Uh, go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Chair, for purposes of the budget and adopting the budget, again, provides the opportunity to adopt the, the ceiling. We still have the ability though to manage within that, within that range. So, so the decision that we make today, uh, that will be forwarded for the tentative budget, uh, will not prevent. Us looking at things within that, you know, if we have a windfall and we are in great, we may adjust that. And it may, it may be, and, you know, we may be looking at it differently six months from now. But I think for purposes of, you know, having some certainty with the budget, for us to move on the recommendation, I think is, is a sound move. But again, we know that we can make them adjustments. One other topic that, one other item to look at in the horizon is that our jail district tax is going to be expiring in twenty twenty-six. Now, currently, we do have, the, the district has done well because of some of the bed rentals and some of the other strategies. That have been employed by the sheriff's department. Uh, I think we, we have managed a very finite resource very responsibly for many years. But at the same time, we do have the jail district tax that is gonna be sunsetting, that needs to be looked at for renewal. And, and we need to look at, we need to look at the, the, you know, it's certainly not a certainty. It's a question that the voters, the electorate will answer for us with regard to supporting a renewal of the tax, uh, for that period of time beyond, beyond that. That, uh, the life of it at this time.
Yeah, go ahead, Patrice.
And, and let me make, make it clear, you know, I really have appreciated the, the, because I think this is a really. The recommendations for this budget are very good. We are meeting so many needs, quite frankly. Uh, and I am very impressed. And, uh, even though we always want more and everybody else is gonna want more, and I guess if people are, 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 don't get a hundred percent. Uh, that's usually a sign that it's probably a good budget. Um, but, uh, I'm impressed and I'm also impressed with the foresight on how to use the A, ARP money as we go forward. So I am, it, it's, it's something I need to look at, but I have to tell you, I am looking to the county manager, manager's recommendation. On, on when and how we increase the emergency reserves. I get it. And, and I, and so I don't want it to have, I think we need to talk about it. I think it'd be irresponsible for us not to. But I also think it'd be irresponsible not to listen to the caution as we move forward.
Yeah, great conversation. Yeah, absolutely. We need to talk about these, get there and see the recommendation. But it, but it helps each of us understand, uh, you know, the pros and cons as we wander through it. Um, so back to you, Steve, for Siri, I'm not sure who.
Well, we can go to the next slide. Siri, you want to take this to the?
Sure, uh, thank you. Um, the next tab is gonna be just an amended general fund again. Um, you know, understanding that plans have changed and, um, where we're going has changed, but it does illustrate again the point. Exactly that the board was making in terms of the impact of, of just a few positions. Um, so we're looking at the exact same information, only you can see up top, this increases the deputy by one. So it adds one deputy position, two IT staff, and a one-time rural broadband consultant. And just to see again how that flows through in terms of long-term impact, if we can go all the way over to the right. Expenditures over revenues, um, so greater expenditures than we have revenues, up to one point six four million. Uh, where previously it had been one point two, three million. And so just that compounding effect again, not to say, um. Recommendations are, are necessarily again, right, right or wrong or anything like that. It's just a further deviation, so more of a gap we would have to solve. Um, and again, then lessening any future ability to make additional, um, investments in positions or, or really anything else. Uh, that if we do this now in FY twenty-two. Um, so again, I, I, you know, I don't want to stay on this one for too long, because I think the board has, has really, um, shown. You know, an understanding of the concepts and what we're trying to convey. Um, but I, I really, again, the story is the uncertainty. Uh, when we look at the box, we have the recessionary plan, uh, plan put in for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. And historically, that would have looked like a twenty-two, twenty-three reduction. So again, that, uh, surplus that we're showing in fiscal year twenty-two, uh, it's, it's reflected in that gray shaded box of about a million dollars. Uh, a million fifteen thousand dollars. Um, again, if we would have plugged in our traditional model of recession in the upcoming year, because we are overdue when we look at things. Although we did have a little bit of a cove. Again, that number would be negative and, and the outlook would look different. So there's sensitivity on this, there's risk in here. And we also want to put forth a model that's realistic, that, um, is our best assumptions at the time of, of what we think. Um, or, you know, what we're hearing and, and what others are doing in terms of forecasting. We consulted with Ellen McGuire on this and, um, and other resources as well. So we don't want to be overly, um, conservative or pessimistic, if you will, on our forecast. Which is why it's more reflected in the twenty-four, twenty-five. But we also want to recognize that if, if we do get a bump up from the stimulus money in the economy, eventually that will have to fall. Because the money won't continue forever, it's not a recurring plan indefinitely, so it doesn't reset our long-term revenue base. So I think with that, I will, um, just stop for now and, uh, turn it back over to Steve.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I think we can, um. Stop the screen share and have a discussion, is that what, is, would that be appropriate?
Okay. Right.
Um, couple items though, if I could add to Siri's comments. When we're looking at the tenure plans, and, and it's kind of a correction I want to make, that, um. We're looking at FTEs and, and I probably should have, uh. should have looked at this a little differently to take the department positions off the top of their head. They're FTEs, because I think that, you know, I don't want to create the impression that because of, because of a specific department need, this is the impact to the budget. So from now on, it's a correction to me that we're looking at FTEs generally. Adding FTEs generally is an important part because again, it, it certainly is not a fault of anyone's work at this point in time, but we're adding to the team. There are certain positions that have been expressed to us during the budget process. But I think when we're illustrating some of our tenure planning, we would be looking at the addition of FTEs generally speaking, not, not put a label for the reasons I just said. And so that, that's a correction to me and I, and I apologize for that. Because again, I just feel that it puts a little bit like the focus is on a specific department. And it is not just a specific, it is everything we do. I feel very strongly that we do everything well and that we should be looking at this as a whole. And so again, it's, it's just back to me. So going forward, Mr. Chair, we will be proceeding with the tentative budget adoption on June 8th. We'll have additional conversations with you regarding the, the components of the tentative budget as, as they occur. More guidance, more information. I also, before I end my comment, I'd want to ask Lucinda to provide some comments as well to the work that we've been doing here today. Because, you know, because of, you know, her perspective is valuable and what our discussion is. So, Lucinda, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve. Lucinda?
Thank you, Steve, and, and I just really want to share with you that I, I support Steve's approach. And I think it's really important to bring in the, the criminal justice organizations, departments, and, and really work with them and have them develop. It is their business and have them come together and determine, you know, what, what do they see as this real bubble and what, what are the impacts? And bring that forward as, you know, a plan to address this bubble. The bubble is real and, but we really all need to understand what does that look like and what's going to be needed. And, and I agree with Steve that we can also simultaneously, you know, really start pushing at the federal level to get some guidance. This is an impact across the country. I personally think that this is something that will li- very likely be integrated. And I think there's a, I don't think there's a huge risk to not integrating this in for the federal government because the impacts are pretty clear across the country. So, so I, I really wanted to say that I really support Steve's approach here and that I think if we can hopefully get that cleared up by the 8th and be able to move forward and have some clarity, that would be really important. So, a, and with that, I also want to really commend you. I think today with the sharing of the information, I think that, that you've really grasped, you know, kind of the, the longer term and the shorter term dilemmas of this process. And that, for those of you that this is brand new to, that's a real challenge. This isn't, this is not simple stuff. And, you know, the boards before you have really held this process. I was part of the team along with Steve that presented this modification to move to a 10-year plan and the recurring versus one time back in 2007. There were literally, we had, I think, eight to 10 presentations that year to put this whole model into place. And you, we are where we are financially and we have the bottom line capacity we do today because of that. And, you know, I, I really appreciate that. So, thank you. I really appreciate your focus on this today and, and the level of comments and engagement today. That's been really great. Thank you.
All right, back to you, Steve.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to just give, if I could, one more comment back to Siri. Anything to share before we turn it back to the chair for?
Thank you, Steve, and Mr. Chair members of the board. No, I think I just would echo what Lucinda said as well, and thank you for the discussion. And I think that we are on a good path forward.
Mr. Chair, one more thing I will be doing today. I'm going to be directing the team to take the weekend off.
Oh, absolutely.
Whoever's doing whatever, everyone needs to, to recharge for this weekend. Again, a lot of good work, more work on Monday, but truly, there are some folks here that are, that have been running ragged to get this thing done. And so I'm going to direct them to just chill out for the weekend. So again, we'll come back to you to lead up to the tentative budget adoption on June 8th. Any information that is going to change or that's going to impact, influence, we will be, I convenient special sessions of the board to share what we get it as we get it with regard to, to feedback from our justice partners, also looking at feedback relative to our, our direction and guidance. So, thank you.
All right, so we're, we're on wrap-up at this point, right? Just a confirmation, that's, so, why don't we walk through the different supervisors as we, we wrap up this budget session? I'll start with, looks like we're back to Vice Chair Fowler as lead on this, I think. Go ahead, Lena.
Thank you. What a process. I always enjoy budget. It's such an educational process and really a lot of, you know, thought-provoking ideas. And it has you running off the path in different directions because you want to add more and you even create mini programs in your head as you, as you go through this process. But in the end, you know, we have to make sure that we are within the, our, our budget, you know, amount and be able to have some reserve. We need that cushion. We know what, what happens when we don't have that. We know that we have to have the dollars there to be able to, you know, be able to react and be able to help the communities. So, but I, 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 I want to thank all, again, just everyone that's been involved in this process and that will be continuing to be involved. I look forward to the plans for the upcoming federal dollars that maybe, that will be coming through and may be coming through. And I think we will need to be ready for those. You know, maybe there are some positions that have been asked and they can be carried by the ARP for a while and then pick them up, saving some dollars from the county. But those are all, I, all, all of the, you know, things that are going to be looked at. Look forward to some studies that need to be done to be able to see where we, we are and how we're going to be able to move forward in a, in a more budget-balanced way with our courts, with our fees and even just, just the, I guess, the, the staff in general and looking at programs. Yeah, I know that, you know, we talked, there was discussion about mandates. We, we went through mandates with the public health. We took that thing apart. Poor Marie, when she came, she had to tear that thing apart and put it back together. But, you know, like Steve said, we can have made mandates, but our county, there, we know the needs of the, are, the needs there and if, and we're the ones that have to deliver those, the needs. And so that's why we, we've got to just really look at the reality of our situation in the community and, and with the county and our, our finances and be able to work it out that way. So, and that's what you've done, Steve, and your staff. So, thank you so much. Really appreciate that. And I really appreciate the passion and commitment by all of the staff, the different, different directors, the departments and our elected officials. They are passionate about their job and they want to make sure that they deliver what they need to deliver. And just as we do, we have our role, we have our job, we have to deliver. And we all do it together and we do it respectfully and all in the name of the Coconino County residents. And I really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisor Horstman, Patrice?
Wow, it has been a long one. So, and I know we have all kind of, are now saying the same thing. So I'm not going to say the same thing anymore, other than thank you. I'm supporting the recommendation from the county manager that provided to us. I'm looking forward to further discussions with ARP and to look at ARP funding for meeting some of the needs that are going to be outside of this budget. So, thanks so much for the staff. Really appreciate it all.
Supervisor Bascas, Rado. You're muted. You'll catch up to me if I let you. Nobody will catch up to me.
I keep my comments short and sweet. Got to learn how to use the mute button apparently today. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who's been part of this process. It's been a grueling two weeks. I feel like I know the, the county intimately now. And, you know, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I too am, am in support of, of the, the county manager's recommendations. I think that we have an opportunity with the ARP to fill in some gaps that we weren't able to based on these recommendations. And so I'm hoping that we can be creative and find ways to help augment and support our staff the best we can moving forward based on these, this tenure plan and projections. So, again, great job, everyone. I know it's a lot of hard work. I appreciate everything that's gone into it and I look forward to continuing conversations moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Begay, Judy?
Just thank you to everyone that offered their presentations. It was well put together. And of course, there's needs or is that less funding than all the stuff we, I don't want to reiterate again. Also because I think it's important that, you know, we, we have a, to acknowledge Steve's work and his staff, you know, for bringing forth information to us and letting us, you know, talk about it. But so far, you know, the, the presentation has gone well and the way I would like to see it. And so, but of course, you know, we still have a lot of work to do in this area. And so I just want to thank everyone, all the departments and all the staff within Coconino County. They're the ones that are pulling the cart, so to speak. And, you know, we're, we're just there, you know, trying to lead them in some way, in any way we can. So just want to thank you, everyone, for your, your, your presentations. And we'll do what we can at the end of the long run, once it's finally adopted. Thank you. And, and then also the board, other board supervisors, you know, thank you very much. And then, you know, for, for being a part of this also means a lot, you know, to, there's not going to be take one person to talk about budgets and everything else. But, you know, it's going to take, the community, as we say, just like kids are going to be educated in these communities. As a community, that's just the way it is, you know, anything that you look at. So I want to say thank you and we had some good discussions. And I, I still want my share of the CI that's, that Lena was talking about yesterday. So, thank you very much.
Isn't that all four of us? I love it. Actually, to, to our board, fantastic job. Thank you for the patience. We all want to move on, we all want to do, and yet sometimes, particularly this year, for the sake of the organization and budget staff, oh my gosh, how we've had to flex because there are so many unknowns. And yet, look what's come together, a prudent way of approaching the unknown. We're, we're prepared to be conservative and yet by the same token, flex in a responsible way. So that's the key item. The, and the organization, the discovery, I love these budget hearings. It's, it's also like going to employee recognition. You find out so many special things that are being done by people that care and are very professional in what they do. Just a fascinating organization, very innovative and creative and, you know, just wonderful things. Budget staff, my gosh, I, I feel so, you, you guys are probably standing on the edge of the Grand Canyon, you know. Oh no, what are they going to do? What are they going to do next? And for your, your patience with us as we wander in and out of the conversations. But it's important to do that. It's important to wander in and out and go through discovery and then, you know, try and do right, but also retract back to a point of where we really need to be. And you're, you're behind every bit of everything that we've just been through, all the work that you do throughout the year, especially now, but throughout the year. You know, thank you, Siri, John, Nicole, all your staff beyond, you, you definitely rock and we really appreciate it. So, before I, I step into a journey, we need a reminder that the board, for those that can participate, I think we have everybody, but if not, we need a quorum tonight. Where time is set for the fire ban?
Six forty-five.
Six.
We need to remember to, to thank our board clerk and the public works, everyone that operated the Zoom and the technology side.
That's right. Lindsay, Lindsay's off working and Val has us backed up, but they've all been there throughout all this.
Lane and Alex and Claire all, all took turns driving.
Though he's left us.
Yeah, yeah.
Our district.
Yeah, mine's off on vacation. They do work hard. They really do.
They really, really, really do.
No, at the end of an 80-hour week, it has been an 80-hour week.
Twenty-four seven, Steve, because what time did you wake up? Two thirty?
The aha hit me at two thirty this morning, two thirty-three, you know, when you just turn over and you see your clock said, ah, I get it. That's when it happened. So if there was a bright light that you saw towards Doni Park in, in the, like a, like this big glow, that's when the aha hit me at two thirty-three this morning, so.
I thought it was just the, the space length they were going, that, you know, they were going over.
And again, this is the, the, the current installment of budget prep concluded. We're still, there's more to it, you know, so to the departments and the electives, this is not, you know, this is kind of our check-in at this particular moment in time. So, you know, there will be some other things, but, you know, we do need to do the statutory duties of adopting a tentative, adopting a final. But again, we are still going to be working within that range of, from zero to $90 million to, to make this all work.
All right. Thank you, Steve. So with that, we adjourn today's meeting and we'll see the board back for the next meeting at six forty-five.
Great job all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great weekend.
The end of my house on the prairie. Good night, grandpa.